Order at six oh two P M. And let us go to three point two, the pledge of allegiance. Once we get the flag up, Triskey Withrow, would you do us the honor of leading us in the pledge?
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands. And one nation under God.
Thank you for that. All right, let's move to three point three roll call. Our student Trissey Hogan. I saw that she was here. Student Trissey Hogan, can you hear me? We'll move on. Student Trissey Cooper.
Here.
Trissey Withrow.
Here.
Trissey Jenkins.
Here.
Trissey Handy.
Yes.
Trissey Delphine Polk.
Here.
Trissey Bonilla.
Present.
Trissey Gonzalez Ewan.
I'm right here.
Trissey Napolea Bella Reese. Yes, here. Thank you for that. Three point four, let's go to the affirmation of the statement of cooperation. If you could post that, that would be great. Well, thank you. So as usual, as we do at all of our meetings, I'm going to start with an affirmation of the statement of cooperation to prepare us and give us the framework for our meeting tonight and at every session. Number one, we agree to listen and seek to understand others and opposing viewpoints with the expectation of good intentions and a deep commitment to the district students. Number two, we commit to being prepared for each meeting and to work within our established communication protocols when we seek additional information. Members will review the agenda in advance of each meeting and adhere to board policy two, three, four, zero for adding items to the agenda. Number three, we have reviewed the board's code of ethics and commit to reviewing it annually at our organizational meeting to remind ourselves of the behavior we are to exhibit and the guidelines we are to follow in our role. Number four, if the code of ethics is violated, we commit to follow the process stated in the code and will first address concerns informally to settle disagreements one on one between and among members before moving to the formal process. Number five, we agree that from time to time, the chair will remind members of appropriate behavior and may call for recess or redirect members if they stray from the topic of discussion. Number six, we collectively recognize that it is within the duties and authority of the chair to render decisions or take actions to keep our meetings on track in adherence to board policy. Number seven, we will strive to fulfill the vision we established for ourselves. Number eight, we will model the behavior we want others to exhibit. And tonight, on behalf of the board, we'd like to add two other comments. In modeling the behavior we want to see in our district, I want to take a moment to make a commitment on behalf of this board that we must do better at ensuring that everyone in our district is addressed respectfully. And that includes ensuring that we are using the correct pronouns for everyone we address. While we appreciate grace and patient when errors are made, it is important that we make sure we are inclusive and respectful as we conduct the work of the district. There were some errors in previous board meetings that can be improved going forward. Our second comment is that we also want to reaffirm the district's commitment to ensuring that all of our educational programs and our facilities are welcoming and accessible to all of our students and community. The Americans with Disabilities Act set the base, set the floor for our compliance standard, but our goal is much higher. It is to have all of our educational programs and our facilities be as accessible as is reasonably possible and to continue to strive to make our programs and facilities meet the highest standards. Thank you for that. Okay, let's go to three point five. Vice President Gonzalez U N, could you please report on actions taken in closed session?
I'd be happy to. Thank you very much. At tonight's closed session, Madam President, board voted on the following items. There were two items. First, recommendation to appoint Andrea Epps as the Director of Employee Relations and Diversity Programs at the District Office at an annual salary of a hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars effective November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one through June thirty, twenty twenty-four. This position reports to the Vice Chancellor of Human Resources and Employee Relations. We also voted on the recommendation to appoint Gary Aubrey as the interim Dean of Educational Success at Laney College at an annual salary of a hundred and thirty-three thousand, one fifty-seven effective October thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, and going through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, or until the position is filled on a permanent basis, and that position reports to the Vice President of Student Services at Laney College. I made the motion to approve, seconded by trustee Bill Withrow, and it was unanimous vote, seven ayes, Withrow Jenkins, Handy, Delphine Polk, Bonilla, Gonzalez U N, and Napolea Bella Reese, zero noes, no abstentions. Madam President, that concludes the closed session readout for tonight.
Thank you, thank you. Short and sweet. Let's move on to three point six, approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion for the approval of the agenda, please?
Oh, my.
Thank you, Triskey Withrow, and thank you, Trissey Jenkins. Roll call, please. Student Trissey Hogan.
Here.
Student Trissey Cooper.
Here.
Trissey Withrow.
Yes.
Trissey Jenkins.
Yes.
Trissey Handy.
Yes.
Trissey Delphine Polk.
Yeah.
Trissey Bonilla.
Yes.
Trissey Gonzalez Ewan.
Yes.
Trissey Napolea Bella Reese. Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. Can I have a motion for the approval of the minutes?
Oh, my.
Thank you, Triskey Withrow. Thank you, Trissey Bonilla.
Roll call.
Student Trissey Hogan.
Here.
Student, student Trissey Cooper.
Yes.
Trissey Withrow.
Yes.
Trissey Jenkins.
Yes.
Trissey Handy.
Yes.
Trissey Delphine Polk.
Yeah.
Trissey Bonilla.
Yes.
Trissey Gonzalez Ewan.
Yes.
Trissey Napolea Bella Reese. Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. Now we're at three point eight, one of my favorite parts of the agenda. Can we have our student leaders into the room and report on your colleges?
Hey, I'm looking for the names that I was provided. Looks like Natalie, Natalie Rodriguez. I'm moving over this panelist.
Okay. We only have Natalie. Are we sure? Do we have other?
Um, I. Harry Mapadila signed up, and I don't see him in the attendees.
Harry Mapadila was going to offer his remarks at the end of the meeting. He's working until seven P M. So he was going to prepare to share them at the end.
Thank you, Natalie Garcia. That's right. Okay. Hi, Natalie.
Hello. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me. I'm Natalie Rodriguez, the Director of Student Activities and Campus Life at College of Alameda. Very proud to represent our College of Alameda students here tonight. I have a very brief report, and so with that, I'll go ahead and begin. We're in the middle of hosting our special elections for A S C O A. Voting will take place on Tuesday, November ninth, and Wednesday, November tenth online. In terms of student engagement, we've had a wonderful celebration of Latinx slash Hispanic Heritage Month in partnership with Accesso en Puente. We have hosted four events as part of our Para Todos Sale El Sol Celebration, or The Sun Shines for Everybody. We had a virtual film screening and Q and A with Director of Primero Sueño on September twenty-third. The State of Higher Education for Latinx in California from the Campaign for College Opportunity. We had a lecture on Maíz and Milpa, and today we had Understanding Latinx, Latina, Latino Diversity and Why It Matters. A couple of upcoming events in October. As a way of encouraging students to participate in shared governance, we are currently hosting student representative orientations every Friday from three to four P M. Except Fri- in October, except for Friday, October twenty-second. This is to encourage students to join participatory participatory governance committees. Interested students can go ahead and email me directly at N Rodriguez, that's N R O D R I G U E Z at Peralta dot E D U. We are also currently hosting CalFresh registration events on the spot during our free produce market. And those, we, we held our first CalFresh registration event today. Those take place on the second and fourth Tuesday of the month from twelve to two P M. Food pantry takes place, or the free produce market takes place every second and fourth Tuesday of the month from twelve to two thirty P M. At the COA Circle. We also have upcoming event and upcoming events and partnerships with our Health Center. Those will be Wellness Wednesday on October twenty-seventh. The title of that workshop is Living with Loss: Coping Strategies for Dealing with Loss on Wednesday, October twenty-seventh, from twelve to one. And then on November seventeenth, we'll have Protect Your Energy: Protecting Your Mental Health in Unprecedented Times. Just really quickly, as a part of our food pantry, we've, in September, we were all able to serve over five hundred and fifty people. We served a total of a hundred and thirty-two families, sixty-eight of which were public members of the public, eighteen were employee families, and forty-six were student families. That concludes my report. Thank you all for having me. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Natalie, for that report. Wonderful news. Student Trissey Cooper. Do you have a question, student?
Uh, no, I had a, a report as our A S M C president.
Okay, yes, yes.
Um, hello, everyone. I am happy to report that the A S M C has reduced their executive council's vacant positions by fifty percent. Increased engagement and membership is one of our biggest goals right now. I am delighted to report that we are prepared alongside our fellow student governments of Peralta to move forward in full support of efforts to bring back the A C Transit D pass for our peers. And I want to thank Vice Chancellor Siri Brown for taking the initiative to reach out and get the ball rolling on that discussion between us and the district. And last, but most certainly not least, I take immense pride in reporting the A S M C's historic undertaking of extensive services from two incredible professional parliamentarians for the remainder of the academic year. We hope to take leaps and bounds in improving our efficiency, optimizing our work under Brown Act, and creating greater results for our peers. Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you, student Trissey Cooper. Let's move to three point nine, District Academic Senate Report.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, I will go to three point ten, Peralta Classified Senate Report. Hi, Terrence.
Hello. Um, good evening, President Reese, members of the Board of Trustees, Chancellor Jackson, presidents and guests. Tonight, we have two classified Senate campus reports. The first report comes from the Laney College Classified Senate. On Wednesday, October thirteenth, from eleven A M. to twelve noon, there'll be a Laney College Classified Professionals Town Hall Q and A with the campus administration to discuss return to campus issues. Laney College has restored its partnership with the Oakland Museum of California with the assistance of point person Cassandra Upshaw. Only enrolled Laney students can utilize the museum free of charge for one calendar year from October twenty twenty-one to October twenty twenty-two. For more information, please contact Cassandra Upshaw at cupsaw@peralta.edu. Please note, staff, faculty, and others must pay admission. The second report comes from the Berkeley City College Classified Senate. Berkeley City College held a return to campus town hall last Thursday to discuss a plan of action around return to campus. Classified professionals engaged with administration and participants around the importance of maintaining safety and the need to be supportive of students. Classified professionals are the backbone of the campus and implementing a plan that supports the B C C community benefits all. The next B C C Classified Senate meeting is Wednesday, October thirteenth, with a full agenda addressing issues that improve and impact classified professionals. And lastly, B C C will hold a midsemester flex day on October twentieth, where Classified Senate leadership will offer a workshop titled Interactive Kahoot Activity for Classified Professionals. Do you know your B C C community? Get to know your B C C community to learn about the professional roles and personal interests of classified professionals, to learn about one another and how we each have a role in our own growth and development in support of students. That is the end of the campus reports. Thank you very much for your support of the Peralta Classified Senate.
Thank you, Terrence. Love the idea of the midsemester flex day. That's awesome. Let's go to three point ten, District Academic Senate.
Hey, thanks very much. Good evening, President Napolea Bella Reese, trustees, chancellor Jackson and her district team, college presidents, faculty, staff, students, and members of the public. Uh, I'm Matthew Goldstein. I'm vice president of the District Academic Senate, and I'm sitting in tonight for Donald Moore, who's getting a richly deserved night off, and a special thanks to Sasha for coordinating the late switch between Donald and me. Tonight, I just wanted to update folks on the October fifth D A S meeting, offer a few comments on district-wide efforts to return to in-person instruction, and I also wanted to mention some of what's on the faculty agenda these days. Last week, at the invitation of President Moore, Chancellor Jackson, and interim Vice President of General Services, Atherius Smith, came by the D A S meeting to discuss Peralta's plans to reopen more widely in the months ahead. The District Academic Senate appreciates the administration's readiness to meet and engage directly with faculty. Faculty members take this kind of managerial openness to engage and dialogue and to consult collegially and, well, just kind of talk things over as a very encouraging sign. At that October fifth meeting, the chancellor went over the many steps the district has taken to prepare the colleges for a broader reopening, and she pointed to the various reports and resources that's made available through Safe Peralta. And I noticed just this afternoon that an email went out announcing new additions to the Safe Peralta website. Faculty look kindly on these efforts and hope that they'll be followed by the district's publication of a practical step-by-step how-to. That is a simple, one-page description of how exactly faculty members should go through their on-campus workdays would really help eliminate some confusion and reduce the feeling of information overload that some of us are experiencing. In any case, the D A S thanks Chancellor Jackson and V C Smith for the conversation, and it looks forward to having them back again soon. And next, as many here may be aware, midterms are underway across the colleges, even as faculty hustle to revise their spring schedules to meet administrative expectations that more classes be offered in person. Adding to the demands and drama of the moment is next week's virtual visit from the Accrediting Commission for Community and Junior Colleges. Of course, faculty played a big role in getting the follow-up reports together, and they'll be standing by to discuss district efforts to address the commission's recommendations and to continue the push to get the colleges off probation. And here, just a quick aside to the president's REA accreditation. Uh, I'm preparing right now to make a virtual visit on a follow-up report in a couple of weeks, and I wanted to encourage the college presidents to rally their faculty to volunteer for these A C C J C positions. Uh, they require a recommendation from the president's office, and I know from a couple of decades of experience doing this stuff that it's really helpful to get the faculty eye on other campuses and also, of course, to bring that knowledge back to our own colleges when it comes time to grapple with accreditation issues. Issues. So again, presidents, please, uh, encourage your faculty to step up for A C C J C duty. Uh, finally, folks should know that the A S triple C, that is the Academic Senate for California Community Colleges, that's our state parent organization, will hold its statewide plenary session November fourth through sixth in Long Beach, and some of us will even be going in person for the first time since the pandemic started. It's an exciting and still dangerous time, but the Academic Senate's work must go on, so wish us luck. Hey, thanks for your time and have a very good meeting.
We wish you luck, Matthew, and great seeing you. Let's move on to three point eleven, Public Communications. Vice President Gonzalez U N, floor is yours.
Thank you. Maisha, do we have anybody signed up or ready to participate in public comment? How are we doing this? Yes, I will move over those who have signed up, uh, or who are, um, on as attendees. Sasha, have you asked them to raise their hand by chance?
No, but I can ask them now. Is anybody that, there we go. Please raise your hand.
I'm gonna move over.
Okay. Now I was gonna let them know that you'll then go ahead and move them over one by one.
Yeah, so I'll move over Alejandro Acosta, um, Aleni, Aleni Gastes and Jamil Tiere. Thanks very much. And Maisha, if you could send me a list of everybody you think you're gonna move over, and then I can get that in my head, the order and who and like that. I'd also like to just request that we have a vehicle or a mechanism to register people's pronoun preferences so that as somebody calling on people, I'll know how to properly address them. It's been a little bit awkward sometimes not being able to do that with that. Uh, and anyway, let's figure that one out. Who's up first, my Alejandro Acosta? Yes. Okay. Alejandro Acosta, you are up. And, uh, do we have the total number of people that we've got? We're expecting, trying to set some norms about expectations of time as well. Looks like we have five right now. All right, so let's do three minutes and, uh, Alexandra, Alexandra Acosta, you're up.
Yeah, thank you, uh, trustee Gonzalez. When I won't take that long. I, um, my name's Alejandro. I work at the theater at Laney College. It's where I am right now, actually. I'm also a steward for S A U ten-two-one, and I'm part of S A U ten-two-one's bargaining team. And so it's, um, those two second capacities, I guess, that I come here to address you this evening, board. I just wanted to make sure that you guys are aware of the situation regarding the forensic analytics H V A C report, uh, or I should say the analysis across, um, the, the district, uh, a particular concern for me is the Laney analysis. And anyway, um, as part of, as both a steward and part of the negotiation team, uh, I am tasked with meeting and conferring with, you know, first level managers for, um, for classifieds who have been called back in to, uh, work here on campus. And it's really difficult to be able to bargain around that in good faith with the district if they have not provided us with information that they have regarding the indoor air quality in our spaces and the associated, uh, risk of transmilit- uh, transmissibility of COVID nineteen. So, um, I guess my, um, request, if I could make one of you board members, would be to, uh, encourage district administration to share that full forensic analytics report with S A U ten-two-one so that we can negotiate around, um, around the impacts to members being directed to return to in-person service. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Um, next up is Aleni Gastes.
Good evening, trustees, administrators, and members of the Peralta community. My name is Aleni Gastes, and I am the Journalism Department Chair and Faculty Senate President at Laney College. I am the advisor to Peralta's only student-run publication, The Citizen. I am here tonight to reaffirm that I stand by the work of Peralta citizen journalists who have meticulously reported and responsibly delivered stories in the name of truth and accountability for our district and our community. Not only has their work been vetted by attorneys, it has been regionally praised by the Society of Professional Journalists, as well as the Journalism Association of Community Colleges. It has been highlighted by prominent Bay Area journalists and industry experts. Our newsroom is open to feedback and committed to the open and civil exchange of views. If you have questions about The Citizen's coverage, you should ask. If you have questions about how student publications work, you should also ask. As the advisor to this acclaimed program, I stand firmly against misinformation, hate, bullying, and personal attacks on members of our newsroom, and I hope that members of our district do too. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Lenny Gastes. Uh, Jamil Tiere, you are up.
Wonderful. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for confirming. Good evening, Peralta Board, Peralta administrators, colleagues, members of the public. My name is Jamil Tiere, and I serve as the Vice President of S A U ten-twenty-one. I am also a ten-year veteran of the Department of General Services. The district is calling members of S A U ten-twenty-one back in the middle of a pandemic, and our members face the possibility of exposed, of being exposed to a virus that has ravaged our communities. I'm here to, tonight, to, um, relate to you. I'm here to tonight to um relate to you a number of member concerns and questions that we've gotten. Um, as their return to work dates loom as early as next week. Some of those questions are as follows. Will a social distancing policy be put into place district wide? So that our members have the knowledge that 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 is in place for their protection. Will executive management who have been living abroad be on site as they've asked of our members and exposing themselves in the same way that we will? How will administration ensure that policies that have been put into place are enforced? And what additional steps will be taken to ensure that all staff concerns are taken into consideration? And acted upon when voiced in real time on our district sites. Has the district reconsidered their decision not to extend S B ninety five? Which allowed for COVID leave for individuals exposed to COVID nineteen, who will be mandated by the district to quarantine or isolate. Is the expectation really that they start to use their own personal sick leave in order to identify and address that? We look further to, we look forward to further working with the district to be able to successfully answer these questions. So that our members' concerns can be put to rest as we approach our return to work dates. And that um and 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 we get back to serving our students in person and in real time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jamil Tiere, for sharing your thoughts. Uh, Luke Ren Piper. You are up, Luke Ren Piper. Don't have sound yet from you. Have you attempted to speak? Cause I can't hear you. Luke, I see.
Yeah.
Try that again.
Alright, um, good evening, Peralta community.
And if you'll just try to boost your volume just a teeny bit, that'll probably help because you're pretty faint.
Yeah, I can't, I don't think I can boost the microphone volume.
Just move closer and yeah, and that's better, moving closer. Great, thank you.
Um, I haven't spoken at a board trustees me in a while, so I thought it was about time. Uh, my name is Luke Ren Piper. I'm the editor in chief of The Citizen. Peralta Student Run Publication. I'm here to reaffirm the role that our publication plays. We're a student publication covering life at Peralta from a pro student perspective. All of our stories are pitched, developed and published by students and students only from beginning to end. We keep our own hours and we pay our own expenses. From interviews to drafts to the final product, students decide what the coverage is. Our doors are open to any and all students who want to come and cover the student body LGBTQ plus experiences, racial justice and progress. Social change, local politics, art, sports, facilities, student life as a whole and happenings at the Peralta District itself. The Peralta community is made of thousands of students, faculty, classified staff and administrators. We're the only news source dedicated to this community because we are part of this community. If we could write a profile on every person in this district from part time, part time students to full time faculty, from past administrators to trustees. We would. If we could file public records requests for every piece of paper that crosses every desk in Peralta, we would. We don't have the hands or the eyes to make that happen, so we stick to what we collectively agree will be the greatest concern to the student body. Some of our coverage in recent years has been picked up by larger outlets. Um, pieces that are often put together in an abbreviated version by these outlets for the wider area to consume. While the vast majority of our pieces don't make the same waves, they all exist for the same reason of relaying the experiences of all of us here. Some of you have worked with us already, some more than others, and I'd like to step uh to step aside and thank you for that. Uh, it means a lot to me and it means a lot to all of us that you take the time to respect our role. And it allows us to give the fullest account of all the hard work that is done at this district. Um, thank you for your time. I hope you have a good evening and I will talk to you all soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Brennan Blake, you are, I think, our final public speaker tonight. Speaker from the public.
I moved him over and it looks like he's gone now.
Um, alright.
Back again, let's see, you logged back in.
Okay.
Okay, I just promoted him to panelists.
Brennan Blake, you've got three minutes in front of the board now.
Hi, everyone. Uh, my name is Bren Maxine. Uh, as far as the school is concerned. I am a second year Laney College student. Uh, it's an exciting time for me right now because I'm filling out my USC transfer applications. And I just found out today that I will walk away from Peralta with five A A degrees. Um, I hope as I move on in my college career uh in two thousand twenty two that I will represent Peralta College as well. And all I ask in return is that you represent me well. Um, I have to admit, I'm uh a little bit embarrassed right now because um as much as I want to. I have feelings about the citizen, you all kind of have some blame for that. I I sat in board meetings where we talked about the security license. Um, to an extent, and I feel like it was kind of um dishonest about what the the request for proposal was. Uh, in my my time at Peralta Colleges, it's, there's like, I understand as an administration, you have a lot going on about faculty and employees. And stuff like that, but it feels like such a disconnect between what all this fancy stuff and like the students. I find it insane honestly that I learn about restorative justice in so many of my classes. But I have to come here and beg you to implement the same things that I'm learning in my classes. Um. For the record, I would have loved to be a part of the citizen. Uh, my first day of news writing was the day after Breonna Taylor's murders were um. Not charged and uh the professor was so disrespectful in that moment. That I dropped the class and went to Oscar Grand Plaza to listen to some speeches that were more important. So maybe that class isn't actually a safe space for everyone. I just, uh, I was looking up uh the student demographics and I know that they've changed a lot. The last time that I can find a report for was. Two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. And you know, I really just feel like you all feel really disconnected from the students. So I just want to remind you all. Uh, twenty four percent black was the demographics, eighty percent non white, twenty one percent Asian, fourteen percent Latino. Half were under twenty five years old, fifteen percent were under eighteen. These are the kids that you all are here for. As much as you have to deal with faculty and all the BS, and I'm sure it's not fun. It's we're here for the kids, so we can have a safe environment to learn. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brennan, um, for sharing your experience with this board. Um, Madam President, that.
We have one more. It looks like one person has raised their hand, um, Richard Tholey, and I'll move them over.
Alright, we've got one more. And just as people are waiting for um Richard Tholey, I'm I'm just gonna make a request that if people could. In fact, share pronoun preferences in their name title. On Zoom, that would help us all. It's really easy. You just go up to three dots in the right hand window. Of your Zoom window and change your name, just add that and then people will have an easier time addressing you. And then we modeled that out and and it becomes part of a norm of how we understand things. So if you're able to do that, please do. Uh, Richard Tholey, are you with us now? Got three minutes in front of us.
Oh, yes.
Please.
Alright, I've been having some issues, but I think you can hear me. Um, just wanted to, uh, once again, uh, my name is Richard Tholey, S A U ten twenty one chapter president. Uh, for classified staff at the um, at the Peralta Colleges. And just to speak to um what our former speaker was was talking about, you know, there is um. A a disconnect that I think uh a majority of classified professionals and especially um us at the bargaining table are feeling. Um, you know, uh, we've, we've, we've been trying to approach uh the district for quite some time. On having, you know, steady ongoing conversations um as uh how it relates to safety. There's been numerous iterations and reiterations of uh COVID safety task forces, um, you know, with one chancellor after another. Um, and there is, it seems to be. Pulling the the, again, the cart before the horse, um, because we, we were supposed to, I think, feel more comfortable with the. The town hall presentation that came about and the HVAC information that was presented. And just to speak for the majority of our members, I don't think it um really put anyone um at ease, especially looking at all the pictures. And listening to um, you know, the level of disrepair um that our HVAC systems are in general. Um, you know, let alone the filtering of of uh of other particulates. Um, with that being said, um, you know, the, we had, we had bargained. Um, you know, for information on the final report, but in the interim, we've been trying to, you know, uh, get some responses. Through R F I reports on the HVAC systems, we'd sent something to the district September ninth. Um, we've yet to get a response to, I think we just got a response that. You know, that information was sought for and hasn't been provided to the district to provide to us yet. You know, that's, that's over a month or on the R F I. Um, we've also escalated grievance on. Um, information relating to the HVAC systems also, um, and that potentially would be escalated further. Um, you know, past the chancellor level, we never got a response directly from the chancellor on that. And you know, through the bargaining and through H R, we've been told, hey, it's gonna present, be presented, it's gonna be posted on the website. I think just now I just received an email stating that that information is posted on the website. We're asking for that. Information to be presented to the bargaining team so that we can truly um in, you know. Represent our members and 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 let them know that yes, this, this information seems to be valid. And you know, we have a. Better understanding of what's going on and we can go in feeling a little bit safer. Um, you know, as 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 folks are required to go in. Um, there's also some disparity as to how some of this, I think, has been implemented when we have. How do I, some of our higher level of administrators, um, you know, never even uh stepping foot onto Peralta. Never doing a walkthrough of the facilities to actually determine, take a look and take a leadership kind of stance. Um, and and just show that level of um, you know, responsibility and accountability. I feel that S A U now. We're gonna have to, you know, en- enforce our own, you know, safety and health committee and start traveling to the campuses. To ensure ourselves of our safety, um, because we don't feel that the district has done that in good faith as, as our steward said earlier. Um, and so we do, yes, so we, thank you. We do have some very uh true concerns, but it is that lack of a response. Um, you know, when we file a grievance and request for information that we're not, we're not responded to um in that manner. And so. Instruction is voluntary for faculty where we're being required to come in. I am wrapping up. Final sentence is, we want some coordination. We want the district to step up and not just leave it up to the college president solely because there seems to be a major miscommunication. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just remind speakers and uh you know this, of course, that on these kinds of items, board is not able to respond. Uh, except in the most cursory way and I'll hand, with that, I'll I'll hand the gavel back to President Napoli Bella Reese. Uh, I think that concludes our. Public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, public speakers, and thank you, Vice President Gonzalez U N. Uh, Chancellor, it is your moment, three point twelve, Chancellor's reports. Good evening, everyone.
Here, I have my hand up.
For public comments.
Oh, uh, trustee Ewan uh made a mention about um, uh. People's pronouns. I want to note that it is not people's responsibility to provide their pronouns. Some people may wish to, not wish to. Uh, we do not endorse reporting ever. Self-reporting is not something appropriate to endorse or or chuckle about. Instead. We are responsible for either taking the initiative to know. Or use inclusive, gender neutral language. Thank you.
Thank you, student trustee Cooper. Chancellor, the floor is yours. Part of that portion.
Good evening, everyone, the board of trustees and colleagues in the community. Um, as we go through the agenda, I'd like to put in order. Um, the presentations from the presidents. I'd like to start with Merritt College and Dr. Johnson. Um, as last meeting, I almost forgot him, so you go to the top of the list this time, Dr. Johnson. Um, to be followed by uh Dr. Rudy Besikoff at Laney College. And then uh Dr. Nathaniel Jones, uh, the third, and the Jones at College of Alumida. And then uh Dr. Angelica Garcia would be last. I would also like to introduce our C T O. Our technology officer, uh, Antoine Mejuele. And he will give a update on the return to campus um in regards to the technology. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Johnson, followed by Laney College, Dr. Besikoff. Uh, Dr. Jones, Dr. Angelica Garcia, and last, Antoine Mejuele.
Thank you, thank you. So good evening, uh, President Napoli Bella Reese, uh, board trustees, chancellor. And uh, Peralta community, this is the president's report for Merritt College. I want to begin tonight by sending some encouragement and some positive thoughts to our students in the radiologic science program. Uh, last Tuesday, uh, the department welcomed representatives uh from nine of our local uh hospital affiliates. For a um socially distanced and masked, for the record, luncheon and advisory board meeting. Um, the event uh also marked the beginning of the fall placement period, which is a very exciting time. The fall placement period where our new students who are aided by our clinical instructors and our merit second year students. They learn the details of their uh clinical assignments. So that's uh, that's good stuff. And just to take a moment to underscore um. Say the prominence of our radiologic science program, just want to note that of the nine clinical instructors present. Uh, six of them were graduates of our department and of the five instructors who were represented, five merit instructors. Uh, two of them were graduates for our program, so um. I think that's uh, that's something worth noting. I want to say finally that the board meeting concluded with an assessment of program retention. Uh, licensing exam pass rates, which are very high, our employment rate for graduates. And graduate satisfaction as evidenced by survey results. So I would say that all signs are pointing to our continued success. Want to go back to something that happened on Wednesday, uh, September twenty ninth. Merritt College had the privilege of hosting a critical discussion on the topic. What does the fight for LGBTQ plus rights have to do with racial justice? Seems to be a topic that's um rather charged at the moment, uh, given the popular culture. Um, conversation was led by Ms. Ronit Montabuena Lev, who was a health educator. She's also the founder of uh Burden B Education, which is an organization dedicated to young people, empowering young people to practice self care. Uh, she's a former classroom teacher as well. And I want to call attention to the dialogue that we had with her. For 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 two reasons, I'll say. Uh, first, I think the discussion really underscored the need for greater recognition. Of how um. Intersectionality, which is the interconnection of race, gender, class, age, physical ability, et cetera. How those things shape the ways in which that we, the shape the ways in which we see each other. Um, and once we gain greater clarity about that, I think we can bridge, begin to bridge artificial divides. And understand that racism, classism, homophobia and all of those things are really just branches from the same poisonous tree. So she helped bring that in sharper focus for us. But her talk was also instructive in that it challenged us, um, challenged me. To examine our institutional commitment for equity for everyone. As president of Merritt College, I need to ensure that all of our students, staff members, faculty. And administrators feel seen and heard each and every day. And not just during a designated month of acknowledgement or when some unspeakable tragedy befalls a particular community. So um, with that, uh, we can and we will do better. Finally, um, on October fourth through October eighth marked Tutor Appreciation Week here at Merritt College. And since we are grateful every day. For our peer tutors and the learning center, I want to take a moment to recognize their work here as well. Just reading the mission of Merritt College Learning Center, our, that mission is to serve as a campus hub. For learners and to assist students in becoming more efficient, effective and independent learners. The primary focus is to provide supplemental academic support and to help students reinforce the mastery of concepts and college courses across the curriculum. That's a mouthful. and to help students reinforce the mastery of concepts and college courses across the curriculum. That's a mouthful. But that work is carried out by three people primarily. The amazing Isela Santana, Charlotte Victorian, and Walter Johnson. They all do an incredible job of maintaining accessibility to learning center resources during this most difficult time, a time when most of our learners need their support the most. But the real superstars are the tutors themselves. So I'm going to attempt to, I should have cleared this with Mark Johnson. I'm going to tip to share a screen here because they did something really cool in terms of honoring that the students who utilized the learning center created this, 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 this collage of sorts to honor the people who helped them. So I'm going to try to do this, see if I can do this. Can everybody see that? Is that up? So they wrote all these amazing messages to our tutors. Um, and I was really moved by this. And they called them out by name. Let's scroll down a little bit. I give you guys the link. Give you all the link if you want to see it. But, um, it was really, it was really a cool thing for them to express their appreciation. Because again, these tutors have classes themselves that they're trying to work through. But to be able to take the time to spend with their, their classmates to help them through, uh, midterms and their papers and stuff. So you all can go back and visit at your leisure, but I just wanted to make sure that we showed, um, our tutors some love. So that concludes the report from Merritt College tonight.
Good evening, Chancellor Jackson, President Napolea Bella Reese, members of the board, colleagues in education, valued community members, and most importantly, our students. Today at Laney was day one of our Fall Fest One-Stop Enrollment and Services event. With any new event or initiative like this one, as for the first time we were starting at midsemester, we held it midsemester as opposed to beginning of the semester. Our hope was that at least a couple people would turn up. I'm pleased to report that as we end the first of our two days, we had a great turnout of roughly fifty students, especially those seeking assistance from our financial aid and counseling areas. Also, with strong showing on a campus level from our APAS, Puente, Moja, library staff, handing out Chromebooks and sharing great information about the library as always. Uh, engineering professor Mallory Barkdell and her students, restoring our communities, Laney's Welcome Services. And to top it off, we had three students today sign up for Coach Precious Gerardo's Women's Water Polo Team. The Fall Fest Fund continues tomorrow at the flagpole from noon until six o'clock. I would like to say thank you to the many Laney College colleagues who are making today and tomorrow happen, not only for our students, but for the community. Within the board report you have tonight, there are updates about a performance by Laney's mom group as at the Golden State Warriors' October sixth Maya Mom Night. Also, a recap of the October sixth Laney chapter of the Poor People's Teaching Campaign and highlights of a great Laney meeting in September with leaders of Oakland's Asian Pacific Islander community. However, things have really been busy at and near the tower. So I have a few additional items to share. First, as part of our ongoing efforts to promote all of Laney's more than one hundred and thirty programs, our guided pathways work continues under the great leadership of professors Laney Gastis and Susan Tim Ross Savala. From October twenty fifth to twenty eighth, Laney will be hosting Areas of Interest Jam Sessions for the college's eight areas of interest, our passion and skills-focused groupings for all of our wonderful programs. If you aren't familiar with our areas of interest yet, please visit our website at laney.edu and click on the Dream tab to learn more. Faculty, students, classified professionals, and yes, alumni will host these two-hour open jam sessions live on Zoom where students can learn about career opportunities, degree and certificate pathways, and most importantly, make connections with the Laney community. Laney College Guided Pathways isn't just another statewide initiative. Instead, it's a student-centered effort focused to help students feel connected, engaged, and supported throughout their educational journey. Equity and student voices have been at the heart of the college's guided pathways work, and we have received statewide recognition for our projects thus far. Yesterday, Laney College was thrilled to officially welcome Ramon Knox as as our new Vice President of Student Services. Vice President Knox comes to us from the San Diego Community College District, where he most recently served as the interim Vice Chancellor of Student Services. Within his twenty-plus years in educational leadership, he has served in a variety of capacities and brings a strong background of student services, enrollment and research management, fiscal management, human resources, marketing, student life, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and educational management within multicultural settings. I hope that the whole Peralta community will join me in welcoming Vice President Ramon Knox. I would like to close my report tonight by remembering a great educator. On behalf of the Dance Department as well as the greater Laney College community, it is with deep sadness that I report the passing of a longtime beloved dance faculty member, Dr. Zacharia Juf, or as he was known Papa or Papa Zach. Dr. Juf had retired from the district prior to the pandemic and his students and colleagues in dance have been looking forward to celebrating his long-lived thirty-plus-year career at Laney this upcoming year. Within our community, he was a global music and dance giant who impacted the Bay Area, the US, and beyond. He is survived by his wife Naomi, who had also retired as an outstanding member of Laney's Dance Department, and another colleague who worked tirelessly with our students. In addition to their service at Laney, I also learned that both had recently retired from Berkeley High School after twenty-five years of service or over twenty-five years. Imagine that impact on our community, not only at Laney, but but beyond. Dr. Juf was also accomplished in his professional realm as well, being honored recently in twenty twenty with the National Heritage Fellowship from the National Endowment for the Arts. And in fact, he was written up in the Alliance for California Traditional Arts as a master of West African drumming and dance. The next board report will further memorialize Dr. Juf's legacy, and students of Dr. Juf will provide an official statement to the board in the near future. I request that we close tonight's meeting in Dr. Juf's memory, and with that, I will end my report this evening.
Good evening, President Reese, trustees, Chancellor Jackson, colleagues, and guests. I apologize for the sound of my voice. I am trying to get over a cold, so please bear with me. My report this evening highlights a few ways in which the College of Alameda intentionally and advances diversity, equity, and inclusion. I want to highlight some of the progress that we've made with regard to our accesso program. As you may know, that our accesso program primarily serves and supports Latinx students who are planning to earn a degree or certificate or transfer within three years. While the accesso mission is to expand opportunity and improve the educational attainment of Latinx students, the program is open to all CLA students. Now in its second year, the accesso program is going strong. It increased its number of students from sixty to over a hundred and eighty from last fall. The program has added a part-time counselor, um, student success coach, and eight student peer mentors, and will be offering this fall twenty-five workshops led by faculty and staff on various topics designed to support student success, retention, and transfer. I'd like to thank our accesso team for their great work and for taking leadership in collaborating with Puente and student life in terms of spearheading our campus's offering in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month. On the instructional side of the house, we have wonderful faculty employing culturally responsive pedagogy in highlighting the beauty and significance of different cultures and our shared humanity. For example, art professor Drew Burgess encourages his students to creatively express their cultural background and experience in their art. This was wonderfully done by Ms. He Jing Ying, in which her art reflects a unique and beautiful synthesis of multicultural expression and artistic creativity. Ms. Ying grew up in Mexico City and now lives in the Bay Area. Her wonderful art provides an interesting visual bridge across cultures. Well done, Professor Burgess and Ms. Ying. Lastly, I would like to welcome two new mental health counseling interns to the College of Alameda. I'd like to welcome Erica Gibson and Elizabeth Montez. We are delighted to have both Erica and Elizabeth helping to support the mental health needs of our students, especially during these very, very challenging times. So join me in welcoming our new colleagues. And thank you very much for your time. And again, I apologize for my voice. This ends my report. Thank you very much.
Good evening. And when I started this, President Napolea Bella Reese, trustees, Dr. Jackson, colleagues, and community members. My remarks for Berkeley City College this evening include a few updates. The first is several of my president colleagues have already remarked on the Latinx Heritage Month celebrations that have been taking place. And Berkeley City College earlier today, we had our very first, um, both live and virtual event on campus. It was remarkable. It included a blessing, a land acknowledgement to the four directions, poems, anchoring, ancestral wisdom, and a history lesson on El Dia de los Muertos and the creation of an altar. I invite each and every one of you to come by the BCC campus after you complete your health screening to offer your photos or your ofrendas to the BCC altar. This event also launched the Flex Your Vax campaign for student engagement and support around COVID nineteen vaccination and other resources. The the altar at BCC is anchoring the way that COVID nineteen has impacted the Latino-Latina, Latinx community, but more broadly, what we often refer to as Black and Brown, often first-generation communities. And so that that coalescence or the coming together of communities is evident with Black Lives Matter, um, connections for the BCC altar. Events later this week also support the, um, the space of intersectionality. So Dr. Johnson opened up and other presidents have talked about diversity and equity work. And later this week, on the Thursday evening event is the Joteria Loteria. So if you're familiar with the Loteria game, which is kind of like a bingo with images and, you know, you play to have bingo, there's a version, um, out there, uh, supporting Joteria, which is a play on the intersectionality of gender identity, gender expression, sexual orientation. Um, and certainly for myself, identifying as a queer chicana, I find it to be incredibly beautiful for our community to have that space, to acknowledge the intersectionality, um, and especially the way that our communities connect in in just a variety of ways. So very excited for all of these events, and I hope that you can attend. I also want to share that, uh, in late September, one of our colegas, one of our, our counseling faculty members, Fatima Shah, was, uh, profiled in an NPR podcast for the California Report. The story is titled, "Rolling Through California: A Family Kept Apart. How 9/11 Changed One Woman's Life." The beauty of this story is that it's a, it's a follow-up story, twenty years after she was interviewed by Sasha Koka when Fatima was seventeen years old. Um, so it was a follow-up report. And, um, uh, Fatima attended Berkeley High, attended Berkeley City College, transferred to UC Berkeley, and has certainly been a part of the Berkeley City College community. And we just feel really honored to not only have her story, but the local Berkeley story situated in this public broadcast. So again, if you are able to catch that, it would be fabulous. In that article or in that report, she's about the eighteen-minute mark is where you can find her. As you know, on this board agenda, we have the, uh, recommendation to, um, accept the funds for from the California Institute of Regenerative Medicine, known as our bridges to stem cell research and therapy. And we are just so excited at, um, being able to provide student interns with paid internships to contribute to stem cell research. And, um, my congratulations to the faculty, the leadership team, um, and the students who will be able to participate in this phenomenal experience over the next five years. As mentioned in the, um, Classified Senate Report, Berkeley City College held a Return to Campus Town Hall last Thursday, October seventh during College Hour. This was a follow-up to the Chancellor's District Town Hall and really provided us community space to talk about concerns and questions, um, and really listen and hear to our colleagues on as we are returning to campus slowly. I want to note that it was such a lively session. We had over a hundred and five participants for BCC. The chat was engaged, questions, answers, the presentation. And, uh, my sincerest gratitude goes out as we continue to address the teaching and learning and facilities needs for BCC to welcome more colleagues and students. And as a follow-up, the students, the, um, uh, ASBCC, uh, has indicated that this Friday, October fifteenth during College Hour, will be the Student Town Hall for Return to Campus as an effort to support students through, um, making informed choices about hopefully enrolling in more face-to-face classes in the next semester. And I really just want to close in gratitude for the leadership amongst the BCC community. We've been doing really great work reviewing and revising our participatory governance processes and manual. I know that I've shared that throughout, and it's not one of the most exciting topics to talk about, but let me tell you, we are doing good, hard, important work. We are, um, really streamlining for creating an environment where collective input informs our decision-making, and I'm really proud of the discussions and the work that we are doing at the college. So with that, I invite you to attend the ongoing Latinx Heritage Month events throughout the district. And that concludes my comments for this evening. Thank you very much.
Good evening, members of the board, members of the public, and Chancellor Jackson. Today, I am, um, I am going to provide a report on the student vaccination and testing verification system that we put in place for the district. We, the task force for the Return to Campus, along with the Chancellor Cabinet, we identified the needs to have a system to track the student vaccination and also the weekly testing for the COVID, of COVID nineteen, for the unvaccinated students. We partner with Oracle and we partner also with the team at the campuses and also all the teams who is involved to the Return to Campus. We come together and we develop a systems and a process that will be, uh, put into the people's of systems, the campus solutions for the students. So we can track, uh, weekly, the weekly testing. And also we can track which students is vaccinated, which not, which student is not vaccinated. And also if they clear or not clear. So, um, we come up with the policy and then we went to work and we work on a developing the system within people's of campus solution. And we made it as friendly we can to to make sure that students can quickly upload this information. We engage the students to test the system and we engage faculty also to test the system to make sure that, uh, we were, we have the right approach. And also the students help us, uh, create a video of instructions for the, for the peers so they can be able to upload the information quickly. And as of, uh, October eighth, this Friday, last Friday, we did a soft launch. And we are here, we are monitoring the system, and we are looking for any adjustment needed to make sure the system is working well for students. So with saying that, I would like my issue to share a screen and play a video that the school did to show how all the students uploading their student vaccinations. While my she is doing that, I would like to add, uh, just thank you for the students, Amy Young, who worked with us from Laney's student worker. And the Laney leadership for providing, um, the staff and the student worker to work with us on this project. So. And.
Okay, sorry.
Go ahead.
Now just, guys, give me a thumbs up if you hear, um, if the sound's coming through. Okay.
So first you log into Campus Solutions and then click on Student Vaccination Tracker. There you'll be able to click Record Vaccination Details and then. There you'll be able to click Record Vaccination Details and then pick your first dose to start with. Type in the date when you got the vaccine and then where it says add attachment, you just add a picture of your vaccination card. If you got the Johnson and Johnson vaccine, this is all you have to do. But if you got the Moderna or the Pfizer vaccine, you'll have to add your second dose by clicking Record Vaccination Details again and then selecting Dose 2 and adding your vaccination date. And then for the Add Attachment section, you just add the same exact vaccination card and that's all there is to it.
Thank you, Maisha. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Presidents, and thank you, CTO Mahuele. Are there any questions? If not, I will turn it back over to the Board President.
Any questions? I see none. Okay. All right. Thank you, Presidents. Thank you, Anton Malley, and thank you, Chancellor. Let's move on to 4.1, Public Hearing and Action Item.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Atheria Smith and we are here to go into, I'd like to introduce Deirdre Sekai to discuss the action item for the SEQA for BCC. Deirdre?
Hi, good evening. I think what we wanted to do first is we want to open, we're gonna, this is a two-part item. We're gonna do a public hearing on the initial study, mitigated negative declaration. And then we're gonna separately, after the public hearing is closed, then move into whether or not to adopt the resolution, adopting the initial study, mitigating negative declaration, so that we could be in compliance with CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, so that we can move forward with the project at Berkeley College.
Thank you. Sorry if I jumped in too quickly.
That was my pause. So let me just go ahead and do the public hearing first. Public hearing into record, gavel in, gavel out. This being the time and date notice, the Board of Trustees will now convene a public hearing to receive public comment on the initial study, mitigated negative declaration for the BCC 2118 Milvia Expansion Project. Have we received any requests to speak or is there anyone present who wishes to comment regarding this topic?
No one has their hands raised.
Great. All right. No comments. I will declare the public hearing closed and may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And second? Okay, and discussion? I believe at this point, the presentation, or do we have discussion from our board members?
I think we hear the presentation, then there might be some discussion.
Great.
So why don't you go ahead, Deirdre, and kind of give an overview? Or IBC Smith, whoever would like to start?
Um, yeah, I'm sorry. I think it should be IBC Smith regarding the study itself, correct?
Uh, go ahead, Deirdre. If you can go ahead and give a detail about how we went into the SEQA. RINCON was the vendor for the SEQA and we did all the postings. And here we are at the end of the SEQA process and we are coming to the board for approval so that we can then proceed with the, and close out the SEQA process. So Deirdre, if you would like to go ahead and add any more detail to that?
Um, only that this is a part of what we had planned before for this project. To move forward is a design-build project. We don't move forward with the construction till this portion is completed. And as said before, we complied with all of the required notices that need to be done. In fact, we've gone beyond what the minimum requirement is in order to proceed with this. And if unless there's any questions about the study itself, could proceed with making the findings?
From what I'm hearing, then, at this particular point, I am just asking for questions from the board. Is that right?
President Reese, I do have my hand up.
Oh, apologies. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Just for clarification, for people who aren't familiar with the acronym SEQA or the process, this is environmental regulation that says when you do building, you might have an environmental impact. You need to study it and then tell us whether you've gotten any environmental impact. We're saying, we've looked at it, we've done our due diligence. We don't think there's an environmental impact that's negative here. And so we're telling the public that and giving them an opportunity to say, hey, you missed this thing. That's what we're doing right now. We've held our hearing and now we're ready to hear, yeah, so we didn't have an environmental impact, didn't look like this was going to do anything bad. We can declare that. So that's what we're about to vote on, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Just for people who didn't know what this was. Thank you.
Chancellor Smith?
I also see that RINCON is here and also the project manager, Bob Parks. I'd like to give them an opportunity to speak on with regard to this item. And then also, I would like to say as the contact, I have not received any concerns from the public during this posting. RINCON?
Sure, thank you very much. Darcy Kremen, I'm the Director of Environmental Planning with RINCON Consultants. And yes, we prepared the SEQA document, that's California Environmental Quality Act. And because the Peralta Community College District is a public agency, under SEQA law, the agency, the district can be its own lead agency. So the district went through the SEQA process. We did produce an initial study, mitigated negative declaration. We went through a 20-point checklist of all of the potential environmental impacts and found that the project could proceed with a few mitigation measures that the board will be adopting tonight. And these are pretty standard things like, you know, as the ground's being disturbed, as the buildings demolished and the ground's being disturbed, if you find a cultural resource, an artifact, we have to stop work, very, very standard stuff. Because this building is adjacent to the city of Berkeley Historic District, we've recommended that the design matches the Berkeley City Historic Guidelines, very simple things that your architectural team will take a look at and match so that the building isn't so different from the rest of the city of Berkeley's standard design guidelines because the city of Berkeley doesn't have any jurisdiction over the design of this building. Other than that, I'm happy to answer questions. It is a public process, SEQA, but once the district makes a determination, adopts the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, then SEQA is done. We file a notice of determination with the county of Alameda as well as the state clearinghouse. And that opens up a 30-day statute of limitations for a legal challenge. And at that point, then we are done with that process.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Bonilla. Sorry, that's Chancellor Smith. Mr. Bonilla?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Thank you for that overview, Darcy. That was very helpful. I don't have any questions so much about the SEQA process, but you did make an interesting reference to going above and beyond and that we serve as our own agency because we are a public community college. But I did notice as I kind of perused through the 460-something pages of this thing, it's absolutely a bear, right? And I did not read the whole thing. I just had to like glance over key areas. I was very pleased to see that there's going to be a solar system installed. And so is that part of the above and beyond components that you're talking about? Because I always look to findings, but I just looked at the overall project and noticed that there's, to my elation, a solar system.
I think that's part of the design. Perhaps Bob can speak to that. I don't think that's part of our mitigation measure. I have to go back and look real quick.
No, excuse me. Thank you, Darcy. It's part of the design criteria for the project.
Okay, okay. And then just as FYI, I think to the Chancellor, as we are looking at the design-build elements of any of our projects that are coming online, I'm just wondering, are there going to be, should we be discussing mitigation factors around kind of zero emission and adoption of zero emission systems like solar systems? And that's just, doesn't have to be addressed here, just food for thought. But I really like the concept. I noticed that there's a 3,000-square-foot usable rooftop and that's, I see President Bursey was like, yes, it just looks like a fantastic building. Can't wait for this. I did have a question. Were there any mitigating factors that we should be aware of that could potentially come in this next 30-day, whether it be from community advocacy groups, regulatory agencies, the city? Is there anything that we should be keyed into about this project?
No, I think the fact that the public comment period, it was so quiet from the public and we did extend the public comment period because the county clerk's office had a little snafu. So we actually extended it a bit and still did not receive comments on this. And I know we've been speaking with the city and so it doesn't seem to be rising to the level of people being concerned or interested in the project.
Thank you. I have no other questions.
I was just gonna say, and just to your point, Trustee Bonilla, we know Berkeley and we know that Berkeley is really always looking forward and always on the cutting edge in terms of environmental issues, sustainability issues. So not having any comments, my feedback that I've gotten is that not only is the faculty and staff excited about this project, I attended the initial launching of the project. I think Bob was there and kind of took the lead on that. But also from the community, from some of the public officials have voiced their approval and are excited about this and think it's going to really help revitalize their historic area. So I am very happy with where we are on this particular project. So thank you, and we will look at that as we go forward with some of the other projects. We have two more major projects that you'll be hearing more about, primarily at Lady College as we go forward. So thank you all for being here. We appreciate your patience with us and sticking through to make this presentation to the board.
Thank you. Let's do roll call, please. Student Trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student Trustee Cooper?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Pope?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarice?
Yes.
Motion passes. And thank you all again. Let's go to the consent calendar. Can I have a motion for the consent calendar, please?
Removed.
Thank you, Trustee Withrow, second?
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Gonzalez Ewan. Discussion. Right, let's do roll call. Student Trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student Trustee Cooper?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Pope?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarice?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. We are on 8.1 action items. Consider approval of the District Bank Signers Resolution Number 21 slash 22 to 47. May I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Thank you, Trustee Bonilla, and thank you, Trustee Withrow. Discussion on 8.1. Right, let's do roll call. Student Trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student Trustee Cooper?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Pope?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarice?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. And let us do 8.2, Consider Adoption Resolution Number 21 slash 22 to 52, authorizing the purchase of Microsoft software licenses pursuant to FCCC Microsoft Campus Agreement in the amount of $210,243. We have a motion?
With approval.
Thank you. Thank you. Discussion?
The Chair?
Yes.
So this item said that it's an annual renewal. When's the last time this has gone out to a bid?
May I?
I would say that, I'll try to address it. And CTO Mahuele, you might also do that if I misstep or not address the full question. Years ago, and I say years ago because it was established back when I was a faculty member. So it's been quite a few years ago, Trustee Jenkins. The state of California made a decision, rather than each of the colleges trying to negotiate with some of the large software companies, that they would create a foundation and the foundation, because they were negotiating for all of the community colleges. And at that time, there was 100, I think there was 110. So we're now at 115. So you can see how long ago that was. And Microsoft was one of the biggest vendors. And rather than us individually do it, then we would have the foundation go out and they would establish a master agreement and they would go out to bid. And they would then negotiate with the vendors such as Microsoft, such as Adobe, such as some of the others that are out there. Our current canvas is also, that we use for our online learning management system, is also at the state level and we negotiate and pay a price based upon that. So that's how it's done and that's why we can piggyback on that and not have to go out to bid ourselves because when we're one small entity versus 115 versus 6 million students using that versus our, you know, 10,000. So, but I can't tell you the exact date, the last time they went out to bid. But this is, I believe that it's, this is the second year and it goes out for another three years. So I believe they probably went out to bid two years ago.
Okay, thanks.
Student Trustee Cooper?
I had a similar question at this point. I would simply use my advisory recommendation to postpone this item while further review of other bids and other potential services that may better accommodate us now and today can be considered.
Noted. Shall we continue with the vote? Student Trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student Trustee Cooper?
I'm staying.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Pope?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarice? Trustee, President Reese? Did we lose her?
My, it appears we have lost our president for a moment.
I don't see her either.
She may be having some technical issues, so.
Why don't I pick up and we'll, we'll with the assent of the board, we'll pause this item and circle back and close it out. But if we can suspend this item for a moment, I'm not sure of the proper parliamentary procedure for that. But if we can just say it's done and then come back. Why don't we move?
I was gonna point of clarification. You do have a majority. Oh, there's.
President.
Yeah, I don't know what happened, but I feel like I missed a whole lifetime. Where are we? What did I miss? What should I do? Or last vote? Oh, yes. Okay, motion passes. Yeah.
We're all good, Cindy. Just keep moving along then.
All right. I don't think there's much to move along at this point because we are at the end of the agenda, which is 9.1 Board of Trustees reports. Let me just go through our trustees. Shall we go to trustee Withrow first?
Oh, please.
Okay.
Good meeting. Thank you.
Trustee Handy?
No, thank you.
Trustee Bonilla?
Just thank you for all the amazing updates from each of the college presidents as usual. I'm just amazing to hear about the work that you're all doing on behalf of students. Thank you so much, everyone.
Trustee Gonzalez U N?
I want to echo what trustee Bonilla just said. It, the we're just seeing the tip of the icebergs, the highlights of what's going on in each campus. And we know that there's a lot of other stuff that's going on. But that for everything you report, there's like 100 people who are working their tails off to make it happen. Students, student leaders, staff, et cetera, under crazy circumstances. So hats off to you. I also want to say about the town hall on, on COVID. Gosh. Well done. We can always do better. And as somebody on a different, in a different district where the level of information that we're getting is substantially slimmer, I understand how hard it is to get it done. And what I also really like is that we've got the mechanisms to pick up all of the static, the stuff that's not working, the stuff that's upsetting and concerning people. So the chats, the public comments, the campus town halls, et cetera, we're rising this stuff up. And I just say, you know, yes, we're going to make a lot of mistakes here, but thank you for everybody who is trying to make this work. Yeah, thank you. All right, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Gonzalez U N. That was wonderfully stated. We do have a student trustee. My apologies. Before we continue on with the board trustee reports, we do have a student trustee that was working earlier and I promised that he would come back and be able to put forth his report. And I know that this is a little out of order, but if you don't all mind, may I have the student trustee come back and give his report?
I think you mean as president?
Yes.
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you. Harry Mapatili, are you in the, the room at this point?
No, I don't see an attendee logged in as an attendee.
He's on as a panelist.
As a panelist.
He's on as a panelist.
And I see him in the chat as well.
Hello.
We can hear you, Harry.
Perfect. Okay. So my report for this, this week. So BCC had a club rush last week and it was a huge success. It was on October 5th and 6th. And the Office of Student Activities and Campus Life hosted a successful club rush. Students stopped by and learned a lot about various clubs ranging from like recreational clubs as well as academic clubs. And the ASPCC also decided on a date for return to campus town hall for students to express their thoughts on returning to campus. So that will be this Friday, October 15th from 12:20 to 1:20 PM. We're also hoping to host more events during the semester and so be on the lookout for more awesome events. And that's my report.
Thank you, Harry, and thank you for staying until the end of the meeting to report that out. Let us go back to our trustees. Let's move to trustee Diana Polk, Delphin Polk.
I am going to be reporting a little bit more on this for our next meeting. But we, several of us colleagues on the board of trustees are going to be attending the ACCT Community College Trustees Conference this week. I'm really excited. And so I'll be reporting back very soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Jenkins?
Nothing for me.
Okay, let's go to our student trustees. Student trustee Hogan?
No, not this week.
Thank you. And student trustee Cooper?
Hello. So let's see, I have three items to, oh, no, sorry, that was from the, that was from earlier. That was the student government. So I have four items here for my reports. All right. A, first, I want to start by calling for our community to stand in solidarity with Peralta citizen. Our student newspapers professionalism extends beyond that of what I would expect from even some of the base premier news outlets. I'm grateful that our students have such an incredible learning opportunity. I'm deeply concerned about the idea of any challenge to their legitimacy. And I'm absolutely outraged by whispers of the district seeking to develop or acquire its own alternative media outlet as a counter narrative when the district's less than favorable behavior is reported openly as it should be. I demand the district's unwavering support for the citizen and that they reassure our community that such rumors of developing an alternative news outlet in the district are nothing more than that rumors. Carrying on to the focus of my report, my second item. Just about every chance I've taken to, I've had to speak, you've heard, you've all heard me note that the board all but refuses to respond to me, especially any amicable request to honor our roles as student leaders to bring any and to bring any recommendations or requests of mine to the board for discussion or reasonable consideration. BP 2340, 2340 reads, individual board members may submit agenda items utilizing the chancellor's administrative procedure, AP 2340 Agenda Development. Alternatively, board members may notice an agenda item at a board meeting for consideration by any board at a subsequent meeting. The order of business may be changed by consent of the board. Members of the public even may request to place matters directly related to the business of the district on an agenda for a board meeting by submitting a written summary of the item to the chancellor. The board reserves the right to consider, or sorry, that's, that part's not relevant. So, so yeah, it seems clear to me that there should be no issue with me as a fellow board member, trustee or student trustee to be able to submit agenda items in the same fashion, especially if it's as low pressure as discussing a topic of importance. What is really disappointing is that I need to point out this to simply request these discussions occur when we agree to this at the start of every meeting with BP 2340 right on the screen. Two, or excuse me, three. And the core focus of my report. At the most recent District Student Accreditation Success Committee, after months of requesting to participate in this committee, it was only upon addressing this stonewalling that an explanation was finally given that the district wants to see fresh faces in leadership, quote unquote, fresh faces in leadership when they can't attend to the student leadership who is already in place elected by our peers. Trustee Jenkins expressed their wishes and quote, "to grow and foster new student leadership." Let me help the board to understand that we have a system in place for that already. It's called student government and the shared governance process. I encourage you to consider actually supporting our efforts rather than sounding dangerously close to calling for the grooming of those they trust to prioritize promoting the district over representing the needs of our peers whom we are sworn to serve. The associated student governments are sufficient. Help us increase our membership if you want to see new faces. In note of this, BP 2510 students reads, "The associated students shall be given an opportunity to participate effectively in the formulation and development of district policies and procedures that have a significant effect on students as defined by law. The recommendation and position of the associated students will be given every reasonable consideration," refer to Black's Law Dictionary for reasonable. "The selection of student representatives to serve on district committees or task forces shall be made after consultation with the associated students." In other words, if you're not reaching out to us, there's a problem. Except for unforeseeable emergency situations, the board shall not take any action on matters subject to this policy until the appropriate constituent group or groups have been provided the opportunity to participate. Participation in decision making will not necessarily be limited to the named groups above. Nothing in this possibility will be construed to interfere with the formation or administration of employee organizations or with the exercise of rights guaranteed under the Educational Employment Relations Act. This is pursuant to Title V, Division VI, Chapter II, One Minimum Conditions, Five CCCR, 51023.7 students. This is the really important part, folks, our nine plus one rights and what above all else this board needs to absorb. A, the governing board of the community college district shall adopt policies, procedure, and procedures that provide students the opportunity to participate effectively in district and college governance. Among other matters, said policies and procedures shall include the following. One, students shall be provided an opportunity to participate in the formulation and development of district development, of district policies, district and college policies and procedures that have or will have a significant effect on the students. This right includes the opportunity to participate in the process for jointly developing recommendations to the governing board regarding policies and procedures. Two, except in unforeseeable emergency situations.
Point of order.
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to ask for a parliamentary ruling on this question. Under this agenda item, which is board reports, is it appropriate to have extended discussion of substantive matters that the board might consider without properly noticing those items to public? And I'd just like a parliamentary procedure. I'm sorry to interrupt student trustee Cooper, but I want to make sure that we are actually staying within the boundaries of what is legally permissible. And if that's so, I'm happy to continue.
No worries. And let's definitely get an answer on that. I just want to clarify that I'm not doing a discussion or an item to be considered. This is a policy. What I read was a policy that already exists in our books and a law that is already written in our code, but let's go.
Thank you, student trustee Cooper. Legal counsel, please.
Thank you, President Reese. The purpose of the trustee reports is for trustees to report on their conduct in the representation of the district. Typically, it includes attendance at events, conferences, participation in district committees, things of that nature. And I would encourage student trustee Cooper, if there are issues that you'd like to raise around compliance with board policies or other such matters, there are a number of avenues, complaint procedures and others for us to raise those types of issues that are outside of the trustee report. The trustee report, as, as noted, is not a discussion area, but it is to report on the actions and activities of our trustees.
Okay, and on that note, I will clarify that I am within that focus because my only focus and action that I'm able to participate in as a trustee when the entire board will not collaborate with me is addressing the policies that exist. These policies that exist address exactly what you just specified. So I'm clarifying about my work.
Point of order. So I've asked for a parliamentary ruling which would either clearly stop this report or allow this report to continue. And the behavior that I've asked about is now continuing after I'm hearing that there are other venues in which this could happen legally, but not under this item.
It's not a discussion.
Trustee.
Legal counsel.
I'm not asking for your opinion on this matter. I'm asking for our parliamentarian to.
That's fine. I'm not asking for a response.
Thank you for both trustees. Thank you.
It's not.
Legal counsel, yes, please apply.
Thank you, President Reese. I would recommend that this item be discontinued if it's going to continue in this fashion. This is the time for the trustees to report on their conduct and activities.
These are my activities. This is what I am working on.
Thank you. Thank you. Let us move on. And I will actually be the last individual to report during the trustee.
It's a violation. I will follow up on it.
Thank you. First off, the town hall, to echo the sentiments of Vice President Gonzalez U N, I have to say that the town hall was, there was a lot of information that was there and I thank all of the individuals who took the time to communicate all the work that has been happening in the district. And this is certainly, it's a feat. It's a feat that none of us have gone through before. It is uncharted territory and getting the campuses right for a safe return is, is the priority of the district and also relentless in, in terms of the work that is needed. So thank you for the town hall. I know there's a lot of communication that's still happening and a lot of FAQs that are going to also continue to be being put forth. And I just thank you across the district for all the work that's been done and is still currently being done to get our students, to get our faculties, to get our staff, to get our administrators to a safe district and for campuses. Additionally, this next week is ACCJC. I just have to say superhuman, all the work that's been put forth and has been put forth in the past year, because if I am not correct, we've actually had three ACCJC visits in this past year, which as I said, is kind of superhuman. I just want to say that I am incredibly proud to say that each visit we've had in the past year of the three visits has demonstrated increased and incredible progress and work. We are not the district we were. You're not the four colleges we were, the first visit. And so that movement forward is palpable. And I just again, want to thank everybody throughout the district for the energy and the laser focus to get our institutions and our district where it needs to be. And then I have the honor and the privilege of recognizing the 90th birthday of a former trustee, Lynn Baranco, 90th birthday. And I just wanted to read this out. It's a certificate of recognition. The Peralta Community College District recognizes former trustee Baranco on his 90th birthday. Thank you for your 12 years of service on the Peralta Community College District Board of Trustees and your dedication to its students' educational success. We hope you have an incredibly wonderful party. I wish we could be there. I have never met you, but I would love to shake your hand and just a celebratory congratulations for reaching this incredibly wonderful landmark. And then simultaneously, PCCD mourns the loss of a legend who has just recently passed. And what I would like to do is I'd like to have Dr. Vesikov close the meeting after we have our announcements in honor of Papakas. So let me just give this to you, Vice President Gonzalez U N, to articulate or to announce our announcements and then we'll go back to Dr. Vesikov.
Thank you very much.
This is a petty and outrageous display to getting called out on y'all's crimes. This is a petty and outrageous display to getting called out on y'all's crimes.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Reportingly. Thank you to the more than five hundred students and faculty and staff and administrators who did, in fact, show up to participate in the Safe Peralta Campus Town Hall with Chancellor Jackson on October four. There were a lot of questions that were submitted, and some were able to be responded to at time at the town hall. But some that we got to afterwards are now on the Safe Peralta website, H T T P S, go on slash slash, safe.peralta.edu. So go there, there's a lot of questions and answers, and it's obviously in development. Enrollment is open for late start classes. Yeah, you can fill up your load and learn a lot. Visit Peralta website at peralta.edu for more information. And then the next board meeting is on Tuesday, October twenty six. Come in your favorite costume for your favorite all time community college person. Come dressed as Saigalasa. All right, that's it. I'm going to hand this to President Vesikov.
Thank you, Vice President Gonzalez U N. In closing tonight's meeting, I would like to share a few words from the Dance Department Chair, Dr. Andrea Lee, and her message to the campus about this passing. Dr. Juve has been a fixture at Laney College in the greater Bay Area arts community for over thirty years, and his relationship with board members, faculty, administrators, and students cannot be understated. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I bid all of you, you have a wonderful evening, have a wonderful week, and we'll see you all next week during the visit and such. Take care, everyone.
Be a lot easier to just reply.
Thank you, everyone. Be safe.
Appreciate it.
Bye bye.